The meeting tonight, first of all, any apologies please, Shelley?
Yes, we've had apologies from Carl Hunter, James Too Good and Steph Too Good.
Okay, thank you very much indeed. Next item is declarations of interest, are there any declarations from councillors? Steve?
Yeah, I'm a trustee for Baby Box Food Bank Pantry.
Any other declarations? No? Thank you very much for that, okay. Item number three, minutes of the previous meetings, so the first one is the minutes of the last council meeting we had on the ninth of June. You've been given sight of this, so you should know if there's any inaccuracies, and I don't think there are, so, but first I'll ask the question, any inaccuracies? No? Okay, are we in full agreement that this is an accurate reflection of the meeting that took place? Okay, can I see a show of hands please? Okay. The next papers, Building Maintenance Committee held on the eighteenth of June, Planning Committee held on the tenth of June, Policy Resources Committee held on the first of July, Business and Community Committee held on the ninth of July, and Environment and Transport Committee held on the fifteenth of July, is for information only. Okay. So the next item is the Finance Report, Shelley, did you want to speak to the Finance Report before we asked questions?
Yeah, for everyone's sake, sorry, thanks Steve. So in terms of the Finance Report, we've got a balance of just under five hundred and fifty K as of the thirty first of July, and payments and receipts are at one fourteen three oh seven, spent and nineteen two eight three received. A keynote is that there has been a slight overspend due to seasonal rolls, but it's expected to balance out, and again with benches, the income is looking to improve to later in the year, so we're expecting that to balance out as well, and the Ventner Park electricity issues resolved.
Any questions on the Finance Report? I've only got a question on the number thirty one bus, obviously that's a community bus that we organise, is there any update on that? I know that councillor Millford has been quite pivotal in this, but grants, is that likely to continue from April onwards?
This one, yeah, the Isle of Wight Council have told us that there are grants available, but it's a bit chicken and egg, so we have to put forward to them a plan of what we want to spend and what we would seek to be subsidised for, and not quite in that position yet, but we are going to meet with potential providers, service and health providers, and with a view to talk, sort of talking to the residents who use the service, to see what changes or custom additions could be made. One request that's been made, it's worth noting, is that people would like to have a first-hand service so they could take advantage of like the wellbeing services up at the church and things like that, so essentially they're fairly happy with a morning service, it's just whether it could be extended for one day, and so we're looking to get the tethers together, that will give us options of, say, do you want a two, three, four, five day service, and what's it going to cost, and then put that together and see what grants might be available.
Okay, any other questions councillors? I'd only like to put on record, I want to thank Shelley for coming into the job and doing so well, and having a really good grasp on fiscal prudence, as I've said previously, this council is in a position that we wouldn't want to be in, and we have to do absolutely everything we possibly can to build up our reserves again, and I'm very confident with Shelley in the helm, but and the work of all councillors round here, that we can actually get into a much healthier position within twelve months. So Finance Report, if there's no further any questions on that, can I have a show of hands for approval please? Okay, the next item is appointments and vacancies for the committee, before I go on to announce that there is a vacancy for the Building and Maintenance Committee, councillor Bond, would you like to say something about this?
Well, yeah, I wanted to raise the issue of the date of the next meeting, but in terms of the vacancy, I mean the four members of the committee are all here. Steve is a substitute, so it's a bit harder, I'm the councillor giving, he's the only person here who could fill the gap, but we have had this vacancy for some time, it hasn't interfered with the committee's working. The next meeting is agreed at the moment to take place on the eighteenth of August, but given the importance of the maintenance work we need to do, particularly on the estimated toilets, we are proposing, why I'm proposing, a delay in that meeting until the eighth of September, so I would suggest Monday the eighth of September at nine AM, subject to councillors' agreement, seemingly to allow us to do the preparatory work so that we can get that moving as quickly as possible. I think councillor Millford, I think councillor Cooper I know can't make that date, so if you're interested in attending, you will be able to attend as a substitute.
That's fine.
So if your members are happy, just agree, agree that change of committee date.
Have we all agreed? I'm certainly agreed, although I won't be here. Okay, so thanks, Steve, for substituting for me. Okay, so if there's no nominations, there's no decision to make, okay?
Well, the decision is on, they could change a date.
I haven't got change of date yet, but no decision on putting some beyond that committee. Okay, item number six is the Isle of Wight Council and Ventner's Library Partnership Agreement, you know, Shelley, did you want to speak to this before we asked questions?
Yes, this is just, this is an update really, to say that we've been provided with a contract renewal, and coming in as a fresh pair of eyes, we've looked at it in terms of due diligence, and believe that there's an opportunity to have a conversation with the Isle of Wight Council around the complexity of the document versus the actual, the role that we're playing in terms of donating towards a salary, cleaning and a contribution to the utilities, so we want to make sure that the document that we're signing, and we understand the strategy that's involved, the terms of reference, so that we can make an informed decision when signing that document, we're also reaching out to COWS and Freshwater who are involved in a similar agreement, to make sure that we're doing that due diligence, and very importantly, working with Steve and Carl Hunter who isn't here today, starting from a zero contribution, so we need to understand exactly what all the basic costs look like, so we know what we're contributing to, and their strategy around the future of the library as well.
So before I throw that to any questions, in a nutshell, this council, for many, many, many years, has given a significant contribution for the running of Ventner Library. Obviously, we still want a library, I think it's incredibly important for any town to have a library, it's not just about books, it's about many, many other things, and it's also about being a community hub. However, as a professional negotiator all my life, I saw an opportunity here to reduce what we were actually giving, so both me and councillor Hunter have decided that the best place to start is a position of zero, and then see what kind of negotiations we actually get out of that. As I stressed in the earlier item, this council is in financial dire straits, and it's, that's not an exaggeration, we're not in a good place, and we need to start finding some money very quickly so that we can stabilise and become the council that we want to be. So that is the position, me and Carl are very enthusiastic about trying to get the right deal for this council and for the town itself. It's not to say that we're just going to walk away from it, but I do believe it's absolutely right and proper that we pressurise the Isle of Wight County Council as much as possible, because it's our funds, and the Isle of Wight County Council have a statutory obligation to keep libraries open, so we will update you on that, and that's what the position is, and that's what we're working on at the moment. Any questions? Steve?
Obviously I fully support whatever else we can make to keep the library going, and I'd put a share of the financial control to under, but one of the things that hasn't helped, our understanding of the finances, is the very late giving for the Isle of Wight Council, but I think if we can make that as part of the agreement, is to really sort of firm up, we need to know what those recharges are and get them into the books as soon as possible, so that we can keep proper tabs on where the costs are going, if there is any kind of bearing.
Yeah, indeed. Any other comments at all? No? Okay, well that item was for information and update only, Shelley's given you a good account, so we will keep you fully informed of that. Okay, the next item is SLCC Towneage Clerk Membership, Shelley, did you want to say something on this?
Yes, this is, this is an update from the Policy Resources Committee that we, that took place last week, where we have secured the membership for the Society of Local Clarks, which is instantly my role, but what it means is, in a position of recovery, and whilst we need to absolutely ensure governance, it's a very good way to secure value for money, so through that particular membership, it allows us to be accessing legal advice, networks, templates, governance materials, and a lot more, so we've signed up to that, to secure that, and it's actually linked to the council and not to an individual, which is really important as well, not where I'm going to be going anyway, but yes, it's very important that we've got that now.
Okay, any questions?
Yeah, and thank you, I was surprised that we, I mean, we are sure, we used to be a member of this going back in the past, did it lapse at some point?
Yeah, it lapsed all years ago.
Right, okay, well certainly, certainly support and joining, I mean, apart from the advice and support we get, it's part of, you know, running a professional organisation, that we're a member of the relevant organisation.
That's what the committee decided as well. So if there's no further questions, that's just for information only, okay? Okay, the next item is Baby Box Food Bank Pantry, so I will let Shelley at Townege Clerk say something on this, and then I'll say something of a personal nature on it.
Yeah, okay. So this is looking for a decision for us to move forward for further exploration around an opportunity to rent a room out within the council building to Baby Box Food Bank and Food Pantry. Now, the intent with this is by renting a room from us to an agreed period, for an agreed rent, first of all, it brings a small income into us, which is excellent, but also most importantly, it provides the potential for these three organisations to be able to apply for grants on the basis that they have a main permanent address, so there are some grants that will only allow people to, and organisations to apply if they have that, so that's something that we are looking to explore further, we understand that other councils do something similar, and I think it was Steve that brought this opportunity to us.
Yeah, absolutely. So all I want to say is just to give you some information, that I have been in negotiations with relevant staff at Baby Box Food Bank and the pantry, it's an incredibly important three charities for this town, we all know that there's, there's, there's an issue of poverty within the town, and we all know that those three great charities do, do absolutely wonderful things. The reason why I think this is morally and ethically the right thing to do is because those charities are needed, and that building that they currently occupy could be taken away, and there's nothing that VTC can do about it, absolutely nothing. It's given to us as a peppercorn rent from the county council, and at some point, you know, they may well take that back for purposes which will be advantageous to them or not. So this is by way of giving a legacy and longevity to those three important charities, not only that, it's also contributing to our income generation as well, because there'll be a rent levy on that. The amount of time that they will be having that space will be half a day, that's what the initial negotiations have come out, so it's by way of giving you this information, and I hope that all councillors around the table can support the talks and negotiations that I've had with those three important charities, because I think it's the right and proper thing to do, okay? But I'll take any questions if there is any.
I'd just like to say I fully support this, because inevitably Ventner Central is going to be taken away from us at some point, and obviously this gives the chance for them for fundraising, for more money, for more premises, basically, so I guess I'll support it.
Thank you.
Just on the sort of budget angle, I mean, we have budgeted for all of the rooms in this building to be let out on an ongoing, full-time basis, and then allow for a vacancy factor, which is normal for budgeting. If you're renting an office out for half day a week, you're actually preventing anyone else having it effectively.
It's our room, our meeting room.
Okay, it doesn't say that, it just says a room. So this isn't one of the rooms that we're renting out to the pub there? All right, that, okay, we've been helped with the report, we made that clear, and so we, so it's our committee room that we, which again, which gets that, that is a more sensible proposal, as it was drafted, it looked like we would be losing the income of one of our rental units, which we bloody would lose this money rather than gain this money.
Obviously, what I plan to do is, is bring a motion to the October council meeting, and I will explain in great detail exactly what the arrangements are going to be, and I'm yet to meet with Magina and Joyce and whoever relevant staff is that they decide to bring to that meeting, but you will have all the details.
Yeah, and I think a committee, a council report would be the right way of dealing with it, because agreed in principle, your members' motion, it would just take you, take you longer to go through the necessary hoops. Yeah, so essentially it just denies us the use of the committee room for half day a week.
Correct.
Yeah, that's fine.
So if we're all in favour of it, can I see a show of hands please? Okay, the next item, the community right to bid, Winter Gardens, Shelley, again, do you want to say something on this?
Yes, so councillor Ian Bond, when it was announced from Isle of Wight Council, I think last week, that a bid had been made, raised the opportunity that whilst we cannot be part of the review panel directly, there is an opportunity for us as a town council to ask to be consulted, given the strategic importance to the town. Councillor Ian Bond, I don't know if you've touched on it.
Yeah, I mean, the process of community rights to bid, which I think came out of the Localism Act during the coalition government, i- in principle is a valuable one, because it gives communities the, you know, the right to identify buildings that if they're faced with being lost, they have to be offered to the community before they're sold for any other purpose, and obviously that in respect to the Winter Gardens, which is a very prominent property in the town, and has had a community uses over an extended period, it clearly is the right way to go about it. The process is quite restrictive in the sense that the Isle of Wight Council appoints a panel, who, of officers, who decide solely on the basis of the evidence presented by the bidding organisation, so one hopes that the community right to bid that's been submitted is, you know, fully researched and evidenced, because the process excludes any other people from making representations, with one exception, and that is that if, if the building is considered to be of strategic importance, then the chair of the relevant committee, which I think is the Policy and Finance Committee at the Isle of Wight Council, has to be consulted, and it strikes me that gives us the opportunity to write to that person, I don't know who that person is, I suspect it may be the leader of the council. Do you know who the Chair of the Finance and Policy Committee is? No, okay, well, we can find out who that person is and write to them, and flag the fact that this is a potentially important site, and therefore we, we hope that the council will be consulting that councillor as chair, and that gives us a chance to make representations, essentially supporting the bid. And that was, and, you know, even if that, the chair isn't consulted, it gives us the chance to put it on the radar screen and express our support. So that would be what I propose, and that essentially is number, number two in the recommendation.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions, comments?
Isn't it owned though by somebody, so how can you bid for something that's already owned by somebody else?
The way it works is if, if the owner wants to sell the property, or redevelop it, no, but if anybody, once it's been identified as a community asset of interest, or one of the right phrases, it gives, as it says in the title, it's community right to bid, so if he, if he or she, the owner, wants to dispose of it, then the community has the right, there's a stage where the community...
And as he said, that he wants to get rid of it then?
No, but it's a protection against that happening in the future.
And who's going to pay him to do it up then?
But it also, no, no, it also designates it as a building of community interest essentially, which is the point. Now, I mean, if, if it was offered to the community, somebody would have to put up, you know, a relevant price, so all it avoids is, it avoids being sold off for some private purpose before the community has a chance to put together a bid, and that's, that's the long and short of it.
You are quite right, there's a lot of money would be involved.
Yeah, it's a money pit, and it's been left to get like that, I mean, it should have been picked up a long time ago, when few of us did at the time, put things into the council, and nothing was ever done, and then it's been left and left and left, and now...
Yeah. This is just a...
It's too far gone, isn't it?
This is just a protection that if it is sold off, that we, the community does get to say it.
And it flags it as a, as a building of importance to the community, and it is an extra hurdle, it's an extra hurdle in front of anyone who wants to do something else with it.
It's heartbreaking to see it like it is, but when Graham Perks at it, he did make recommendations for it to be done up, and he was pushed out, and that's why he didn't keep them, and it's been going downhill ever since.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think what councillor Bond is actually saying, this is another hurdle, so it just gives that little bit of extra protection, but as you said, this is the right thing to do, on the recommendations, and, you know, at least the community will actually have a say in it, and, you know, then, you know, there may be a multimillionaire out there that might want to throw a lot of money at it, you never know.
It'd be nice.
You never know.
It would be nice.
Any other comments on that?
Do we have any interest, any interest in it so far?
No, no, no. No, we don't know that.
No, there were rumours, but I don't think it's appropriate of us to discuss them at council meetings.
Too many.
We don't do rumours at council meetings.
It's a shame, I mean, it's heartbreaking to see it like it is.
But we don't do rumours at council meetings, okay? So if we're all in agreement to that, can I see a show of hands please?
I'm going to abstain on that one.
Okay. Okay, next item is flagged early by councillor Blake, the Isle of Wight Council's Environment Officer provision, did you want to talk to this, Shelley?
Yes, so thank you to councillor Blake for highlighting this opportunity to us, and the provision of an environment officer, I think as, as Steve has touched on a number of points, that given our financial position at the moment, and urgently for recovery, this isn't something that we can invest in at this time, however, we do recognise the importance of the role, and the purpose of that role, and the aims of that role, so in terms of update, myself and one of our other officers will be representing and sort of keeping an eye on this, and working what we can into our current strategy, and certainly keeping in touch where we can with the Isle of Wight Council as their strategy develops.
Any comments?
Yeah, I mean, I wasn't clear when I read exactly what is being envisaged, I mean, if, if, if the proposal is that somebody in the council needs to take, you know, as part of their job description, needs to have environmental responsibilities, that, you know, which is one of our responsibilities as a council, that is something we should look at, and obviously we've got, well, we have sixteen staff, we essentially have an office and administration staff of four, and we ought to look, you know, we ought to identify who has the lead on, on environmental matters. If it's, if the suggestion is we should employ an additional person, I mean, that's clearly out of the question, given the financial situation that we're in, if the suggestion is that we should provide resource to do work that currently is the responsibility of Isle of Wight Council, I mean, yeah, they can delegate things to us with our agreement, but they would need, well, that would need to be a formal proposal that went to the Isle of Wight Council, and I'm not sure we would want to be taking on that work, I mean, the Isle of Wight Council has responsibilities, it is responsible for employing the staff to carry them out, so I mean, things like, you know, noise complaints and so on, I mean, those, those falls to the Isle of Wight Council, it's not for us to get involved in those.
What?
I don't agree with everything that Ian has said, because Roxton Parish Council actually employed an environment officer from the Isle of Wight Council, it cost a lot of money, and there wasn't much effect from it.
Yeah. Well, I'm going to have my say on this, I totally concur with what you're actually saying, as Chair of Iwok, I've heard many, many reports from island councils across our island, basically saying that it is not value for money, now, I can only give you that, as that's what I've heard, so I think Shelley's absolutely right, we, we can't afford it at the, this moment in time, this junction in time, doesn't mean to say that we're not going to in the future, but if we did do in the future, I'd want some sort of cast iron guarantees that they were going to do certain jobs, and that we would have control over that, I certainly wouldn't want to be in the position that other councils across the island have, have, have paid for this service and seen very little for it. This council is not about that, and we do hold people to account, and that, that would be what I'd be saying on it, okay?
But certainly when we are looking at our, the role, the job descriptions of our staff at the moment, or we were under the previous clerk, and I know that work's outstanding, and we ought to be sure that we, you know, we're clear on where the various environmental responsibilities we have fall as part of that. And I mean, that's working progress, so, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, in terms of the recommendation, it is absolutely that, councillor Bond, its model continues as it is, because it's a sustainable proportionate approach.
Okay, so with that in mind, and our financial position, are we all in agreement that at the moment we're not going to take this forward? Okay, show of hands? Okay, Ventner Council Bank Account Signatories, Shelley?
Yes, this is a, say, simple change, the fact that the exiting Townege Clerk has now left Ventnor Town Council, and it's to replace my signatory on the bank account moving forward.
Okay, that's a simple operation, okay? You're all in agreement? Thank you. Item number twelve, Belgrade Road Green Area, Shelley?
This is one that councillor Hunter has been working on with officer Morgan Williams, with regards to, sorry, bear with me, a green space that's near to the Royal Hotel, and the owner of the Royal Hotel is looking to secure an agreement with us to look after that area, and take control of it basically for us, as it is in a, as a site of disrepair, as you'll see from the...
I thought that used to be the case. I don't know quite how it lapsed then, the hotel used to look after it at one point, and they planted, it has actually got, although it's a bit overgrown, it has actually got, and it was cut back for any reason, I think, it has got some interesting plants, it's not just brambles, and, you know, it's not what you get if you just left a space, I mean, you can see from the picture, it has got some, I'm not an expert, but they're not weeds anyway, and the hotel used to look after it, and whether that lapsed at some point with the change of ownership of the hotel?
We will take that way, certainly they're looking to take on the section one, one forty, and I know that councillor Hunter's been very involved with it with officer Morgan, so we'll take that way, and we'll look to it.
Yeah, the idea's a good one, I just, it just, it sort of presents as a new idea when I seem to be returning to what used to happen.
Okay, any other questions on this?
We saw somebody doing this last year, didn't we, when we walked by? There was in, some chap in a boiler suit was in there cleaning it out, I don't know if it was just...
It happens two or three times a year, and it happened just recently, so somebody is still maintaining it, whether it's the Isle of Wight Council, or just coming to cut it all back or not, I don't know.
No, I think, yeah.
It might be somebody voluntary doing it.
Yeah, I mean, I don't like to say, but I think, yeah, somebody does do that kind of voluntary, but...
It's Morris, Morris.
Morris looks after it.
Okay, all right. Steve?
Yeah, just wanted to clarify, so we're talking about, you say we saw one part of contract to fund this, and this had a one-off run going.
Shelley?
The intention would be that it would be ongoing, but again, we need to explore the detail of that and make sure it's financially viable.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think we should explore it, but bearing in mind, because there, there used to be the pub there at one time, didn't there, and I'm sure that used to belong to the Royal at that time, so whether or not that's...
Used to have a little pub there, what was it called?
The Tap.
Oh, yeah, Royal Tap, did you ever go in it? I did, many a good night. Say that more.
Okay, well I think it's a sensible way forward anyway, to let the officers explore that, so...
I thought they owned it.
Are we in agreement with this then?
Yeah.
Show of hands? Okay, so the last item is to let you know that the next council meeting will be on Monday the thirteenth of October, it will not be held here, it will be held at our library, and library staff... And library staff had a conversation with me, and they want to highlight the fact that we've got a thriving library, and they want to host us there, so it will be hosted at the library at seven o'clock, same time as usual, on the thirteenth of October.